Call the meeting to order, the Action Downtown Development Authority, August 18th. Please rise and pay respect to the class.
I'd like to lead this to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have you take rockies?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it one of you?
Oh, okay.
Wait, what was that?
I'll do it.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay. Scott Taylor.
He's absent.
Jay Chow.
Here.
Melissa Canelos.
Here.
Jacob Nicosia.
Here.
Ashley Ross.
Here.
Marie Powers here. Rod Charles absent. Pete Schultz.
Here.
Thank you. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Consent agenda, approval of the proposed agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written and approve the meeting minutes from July of 2020- 2025.
I'll second it.
Been moved by Powers and seconded by Canelos. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed something? And consent agenda, um, B, C, and D? Oh, you did the C.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to receive and file Agenda Items 5, C, and D, the police report and the food enforcement report.
Support.
Been moved by Ross. Reported by Nicosia. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Focus anything?
Vote on that one for the money or?
Nope, it's the next one.
No, that's the next one.
That's the next one. Financials?
Motion, uh, motion to receive and file, uh, bills, uh, 6B in the amount for July 2025 in the amount of $30,691.89.
Okay. Roll call. Melissa Canelos?
Present.
Oh, somebody needs to second that, sorry.
Hello.
Okay. Melissa Canelos?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Scott, Jay Chow?
Yes.
Jacob Nicosia?
Yes.
Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Marie Powers, yes. And Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Did we receive and file A? Was that perfect? 6A?
I believe so.
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Number seven, the DDA reports, the board committee report. Yeah. You mean I was the only one? That's the thing.
You get it.
Board meeting met, um, discussion was on the basic informational purposes on the art program where we stand as far as on the sidewalk repairs and also the discussed elimination of the crosswalks and also the gazebo grants and what's the update on those? Those will be covered in the agenda later on tonight. The trolley, same thing, update on that, um, with the insurance and there was discussion about the trolley, um, as far as how long do we want to continue working with it? Do we want to consider potentially ending at the end of the year and no longer having the trolley and putting it up for sale and cutting our losses or cutting our liability response at that point or what the intent of what we wanted to do? So I think it needs further discussion from the entire board and everything later on to that. Kimberly?
Yeah, just to note, the board meeting happened prior to the trolley coming back online.
Correct.
So I think the conversation at that point was a little more or a little less optimistic than because there was no line of sight of it coming back online and then the following day it came back up.
Correct. So other than that, that was pretty much it for this discussion. EV Committee Report?
Uh, we actually had, uh, yes, Jack Kirby's concert supervisor over there had some good things to input, talked about how our tax revenue from the village is mostly from residential and we'd love to kind of see that swing a little bit towards 50/50 and he offered some good incentives to offer business owners and land developers, mainly about how our DDA is being street accredited. That's a big accomplishment that, you know, that any business owners have benefited from their, their help and there's a lot of things that they can do for new business owners to come into town. Briefly talked about trying to bring certain types of businesses that are in need in the area and obviously it's not that easy to decide which businesses come in, so there's still a little bit more conversations to be had there. But we put out some great numbers, 34,000 cars drive through downtown Oxford every day and a lot of times we're having a hard time slowing down to stop in our downtown. I don't know if it's lack of interesting businesses or whatever they need. Also, um, we did talk about how there's, I can attest to this too, there's so many people speeding through 24 downtown, possibly talking to the village and the police department, sheriff's department, really trying to enforce, kind of like how they do by Frosty Boy, that's like the enforcement zone, I feel like in this area. We did bring some of that manpower over here to 24, slow down some of the speeders through and, you know, some of those, what do you call them, airjack rigs from the gravel trucks that can be real loud, you know, that disrupts a lot of our events in the park and people just walking through town, you know, that's a big complaint, you know, about the gravel dust flying everywhere. So, um, I was, I think that was really good for us to hear from him. And then after he left, we talked a little bit more about, you know, what we can do to bring, uh, to boost the economy in downtown Oxford. Right now, you know, I feel like, we feel like there's a great base of events like the concerts in the park and the vendor market. What more can we build on top of the foundation already set to really help boost the economy? Because right now we don't really see too much. One idea that he suggested was, you know, the concerts are open for next year, the concerts, trying to get some zip codes to see where these people are coming from. We're drawing people from, to bring them into downtown. I think that would be a good number to look at in the future. We also discussed different businesses who can team up and help each other out. Seems like there are some businesses that are already doing this, but as a DDA, what more can we do to help, not just promote, but connect businesses together, businesses that we think might help each other prosper, right? So, um...
Were there any suggestions from the committee of what might make sense to partner or is the committee recommending the DDA staff to put this together?
One, one suggestion that was brought out was having, um, these events like the concert in the park, having some kind of promotion with different restaurants and, you know, different food items because a lot of people come and they just see the thick piece of truck and they don't know where they're going. Really the only businesses that really are gaining anything, um, from speaking with other business owners in town and especially the ones across the street.
Giving across the street.
They're not getting any foot traffic. So if we can somehow, um, get some sponsors from different businesses around that can promote their own items, you know, foods or services, that might be good to get that out there too.
And we, just as an FYI, we do offer that to any business, any food-based business. They have the option of setting up in the park over the summer. We just don't get a lot of interest in that.
Yep.
Which is fine. But we have had conversations for next summer if we even want to have food, like food outside of the brick and mortar, that has at our, our, at our concert.
And doing things like that is more on the side of advertising. So, I mean, they have to staff it, they've got to have food down there, it's got to state attempt for the health department precautions, so, but they know that going ahead, so, but that's discussions directly with the restaurants involved.
Yeah, and we're happy to help support, like a coupon or some sort of like incentive for people to come. This year we did have a table set up, which was a new thing. We haven't done that in the past, so we have a DDA table. It was literature, DDA literature, and we could certainly have, you know, those at our table or have like that as part of the bingo prizes or some sort of raffle.
What, a bingo prize?
Yeah. We, well, we did bingo one week and then, and then we did ask for, you know, donations, essentially for the giveaways. So, yeah, absolutely. And they don't have to be donations, I think we can pay for them next year, but it's definitely an option. We're happy to help support. You know, that's some of the feedback that we've gotten is, you know, the potential competition with the brick and mortar and having things at the market or at the concerts or any other event that we have. So we're really taking a look at that this year and really thinking about how we want to proceed next year. I think we've done a good job of reducing that, um, from the past this year, but we're still hearing feedback.
Pete?
Right.
Uh, just a comment from some of the business owners is that we don't really reap much benefit from events that are free in the park because people tend to just fly in, fly out, and, you know, there's really no activity at the businesses downtown. So we, the committee was discussing ways to try to do either something that was ticketed at a business or some way of generating revenue for the, for the brick and mortars.
Cause like in the same night as the concerts or a separate?
As a separate, as a separate event.
Yeah, and I think that's something we talked about. We're talking about it in promo, we'd like to do something different in 2026, especially in Q1. The smaller events that we've done historically just are not bringing the traffic, bringing the sales in, so we were thinking of potentially larger ticketed event in late January, early February.
One last thing I skipped over. The committee wanted to explore more grant opportunities and thought that would be something that we could continue to win year round, just exploring the grants at one point, all that we want to do. And we have volunteered Kimberly to.
He's doing that. He's doing that.
I'm going to end the caveat to that because I think volunteering Kimberly is a great way to go, but I know in the past, like when I was on EV, Kimberly doesn't necessarily have all the time, so like Kelly and I used to just sit and write it together. And so I think it can't just, all of the owners can't just be on him. I think that's part of what this committee needs to do is Kim can help identify, but if the committee can help write or start or send stuff even my way or whatever, I think it needs to be collaborative because if you just put all that on him, that's like, that's a lot.
Your name didn't come up, Ashley.
I know, but I mean, that's a lot. I mean, I don't have time to necessarily say.
Re-reputize that, yeah.
But I think like that's a big, big ask.
So knowing that, um, we've discussed possibly hiring a grant writer to have on staff, we can discuss that more so, but, you know, one example was paying, paying somebody $30,000, $40,000 to bring in $200,000 to $300,000 worth of grant money every year, might be worth it, but who else can we get that, Harry? That's, that's a...
That's an interesting idea.
I'll put it out there.
I love that idea. One thing I will note, just really quickly, not to interrupt, but there is, and we can explore that, but there is a resource through Oakland County Main Street and his entire job is to help businesses in Main Street, so I would imagine we would be part of that, identifying grants and helping to write grants for, for those businesses. I would need to do a little bit more exploration to see how much that really would look like. I think at this point, just it's a part of the conversation, we're administering a grant right now, a very large grant, so that's taking up a lot of our time, but certainly it's in the back of our minds of grant opportunities going forward. What do we want to focus on for that? Because, so Ashley's pretty, does take time, so every time, and you're not guaranteed to get the application, right? So you submit five applications, you get one or two maybe?
Well, a follow-up, and obviously Rod carried that over to your committee because we talked about it. The same thing that Rod was driving the train on that one too, and, you know, his vast ideas is just go get them, there's millions of them sitting under shut, we should just be able to pick 10 of them off a week kind of a thing like that. I think he's reaching for the pie in the sky, but reality is, it's a ton of work, obviously Ashley can verify that, it's a ton of work to do a grant. And it's not just sitting down and filling out the blank. It takes weeks and months ahead of time on some of the grants to accumulate the information that you need to fill out the grant because there's a whole lot of economic background, um, history and so on and so forth that goes into filling out a grant. And again, it takes a lot of time. If, you know, we keep throwing and saying, well, Kimberly can do that, Kimberly can do that, but at the same time, remember that our intern is gone now for the summer, so we don't have that person in the office. And, you know, we still have, our other person is working part-time in the office too, 20 hours a week, so you've basically got one and a half people working the office and trying to run everything and then trying to say, well, here, dump all the grants on that person and tell them to start writing grants and everything. It's not, it's not realistic with the manpower that we have. If we're going to continue to talk going forward, then maybe we should up, you know, up to a full-time position that we already have, you know, so we can get stuff done in the office at the same time. Plus we're on around setting up, you know, for the concerts, setting up, you know, for the, the projects and everything, so manpower is, you're looking at it right there in the room, Ashley.
My recommendation, since we're talking about it, would be that we develop relationships to try out a few grant writers. Contract them outside, get, obviously there's going to be some starting points of, hey, they need to know about the organization to write something else, so there, there will be that, but that's going to, in my mind, be the most cost-effective. And then you can develop a relationship with that person over time. We don't have the overhead and then their full job is either, you can hire them to find grants, so either find it, write it, submit it, follow-up reports, because that's what's going to take up all your time, right? If you have somebody, hey, I got this project, find me a grant for it, write it, and then you still have to manage it when it's here, that's, that's a lot already, but I think that would be an option in terms of what, what we would all maybe feel comfortable with spending right now.
Yeah, and I can definitely reach out to my peer network and see if there's someone that is fragmented. That was DDA's already. Is it you?
I think there's a conflict of interest, but, but no, I, for me and this, I would help you guys out, but I don't think that would be the best way to go.
Anything that falls on yet? Promo Committee?
Would you like me to speak on this since Holly's not here?
Please.
I'd be happy to. All right, so I was in attendance at the promo committee. Um, we had a visit from Eric Phillips, he's from Main Street as well, correct? All right. Super great guy, um, he brought in some excellent data, um, so actually it piggyback on the, the commenting about figuring out where the business and things like that are coming from. So he said what it's, they use data from cell phones and determine where the business is coming out of, so he did provide some of that data and we're going to be going over that at the next DEBAM meeting. At promo committee, we did talk about the Downtown Day, September 27th, um, and it's an event to bring awareness to a local downtown. We also initiated some ideas about, um, maybe reaching out to OCTV or someone local about doing mini videos, um, to help promote those and spread the word on Facebook or through OCTV and local television. We have Scarecrow Fest coming up and we determined the theme this year is going to be video games. So the business owners do have a sign-up sheet, um, to go ahead and select which one they're doing, which is Night Out is October 24th. Small Business Saturdays, November 29th this year, and, um, we're going to be doing selfies and posting those throughout businesses. Soup and Sweets, December 5th. We're discussing, um, the solar, the Polar Express, that it's going to be based on the functionality of the trolley. So, so back to that one, we should know more about that in the near future. Um, and then also piggybacking on the Q1 events that we were discussing doing, um, we had some great talks and ideas about wanting to bring in some more male-focused business into town, um, you know, it, the, the brew and the sports and things like that generally tend to bring in a tie, but we have more success with the women's events in towns. So piggybacking off of what the Rotary does in Lake Orion, which is a great, great, great program, they have, um, an, uh, an ice golf day, yeah, and, and it's, and it's awesome. The businesses get involved and they have little mini, mini putt-putt areas in their businesses and it's just, it's really cool and it's well-attended, even though I swear it's negative 20 every year when they do it. Um, but we were talking about doing like an Oxford-style Olympics day, so we could have different types of games in each of the businesses and it'll get people walking around town and have scorecards and all that good stuff. So, um, we'll be talking more about that in the coming meetings. Also, um, thought of the idea of a progressive dinner. I think, thought that that would be interesting, that would be a good, I mean, whether it's Valentine's Day or before or after it, another way to generate some business and advertise to the businesses that don't get touched for some of the free events. Um, a Polar Ice Gold event, we have noted as well. Is there anything I missed there, Kim? All right.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Um, we have the design committee report today.
Yes, uh, the design committee met on August 5th. I do have an agenda item for a, um, um, board vote, but I'll say that for the end. We discussed the fact that there aren't any current, um, signed grants or facade grants in motion. There's been some work with the Chinese restaurant to get them to perhaps apply for a facade grant. We have the, uh, someone pitched the idea of having shipping containers or other kind of small units that could be used as temporary storefronts, and I know this was an idea we had talked about on Berdick, um, a while back. That was discussed. Scarecrow Fest, as mentioned, is October 5th, and I don't know if we have a decor day planned already, but that was an open agenda item that, that we captured.
I think we were talking in September, but I don't give this at the time.
Okay.
We're going to wait till they're back on the truck.
Okay. Uh, we talked a little bit about the state of the shed at Washington Square. And we did, uh, the design committee did, uh, refabricate the planter boxes in Washington Square, so I think they look a lot better. And I think that's the highlights for, with our meeting, but I do want to, um, ask the board for approval on a, um, I'll make a motion to move forward with H&amp;H powder coating. They are going to be refurbishing the waste receptacles in the benches, um, the existing 10 benches and 12 waste receptacles at an estimated cost of $14,550.
That's under a new business, we'll cover that.
Oh, you will? Okay, good.
Yeah, just to clarify, there's a breakdown spreadsheet later in the packet that walks through the details of that.
Okay.
Very good. Our home and history subcommittee?
There they go. All right. Kind of last-minute meeting change. Um, Holly and Rod have been sending me a ton of items for the state marker because we were missing a few items or they had requested more information. I shouldn't say we're missing, they've requested more information, so I have it on my calendar tomorrow to sit down and compile all of that and make sure that we aren't missing. Anything, I'll send that back to the state. So the mural, the last time we talked at the board was a non-starter because we weren't going to be permitted to have access to the roof. We are rethinking the RFP. Oh, look at Kimberly and Ashley are preparing an RFP. We're preparing an RFP.
Kimberly does a great first job for our new consultant.
I, I sent a template that I used for the last mural I did, um, for an RFP that I think will cover most of, but I think we should just get maybe Joe to look it over real quick as well before sending it out. And it would be using a cherry picker instead of doing any scaffolding, um, and just see what we get. I think that's kind of the starting point is we don't even know what we'll get at this point with understanding and that person would also have to carry their own insurance, I mean, all of the requirements that we would for the village, be able to get that equipment there. So there's a lot of intricacies, so, but last time was kind of DOA, now we'd like to revive it, put out RFP and at least see what we get. Um, historical places tour, huh, that trolley, okay. Um, Village 150th, that's kind of the next steps after we get through this next kind of last summer push is to start preparing for next year. Joe, do you know where the time capsule is?
I think there's one in the park, there's a little plaque of the ground over there. And I believe there's one in the old safe here, in the clear.
Okay. Can we get in there?
Maybe. So I believe that one's joking, I think it's in Centennial Park, because the spot is, I'm going to rent the ground, I'm going to rent the art there, I think, and that ground, a little bit, they're showing between the bed.
So that's probably a conversation to take to, what, would that be promo? Plan some sort of event around that for next year, so if that's forthcoming. We haven't had any further discussions on the museum right now and that's probably because they've been busy and haven't had a chance to do anything, so more updates in September.
Very good. And the executive directors report.
Okay. So in the packet, I'm going to have Jess up here, she put together several reports, event reports for the conclusion of our summer activities, so I'm going to have her speak to that, but while she's walking up, I'm going to just highlight a couple very quick things in the executive director's report. Our OC tax support grant of $10,000 was approved for our trolley, so we thought we will be getting that supplement shortly from Oakland County, so that's very exciting. We were included in the Michigan Municipal League Summer Edition magazine for our win at the Matri Award, this was a big deal, so it was pretty exciting. Speaking of grant writing, I attended a couple of workshops over the last couple of weeks around, um, grant training. I will say a lot of it was focused around federal grants and I know that that's not really something we pursued a lot before that I'm aware of, but it was still wonderful information because of my background's not, and that's what gave me a, a good framework for what that entails. There is a training next week on the 28th through Oakland County that would strongly encourage any new board members or council members to attend. It's really talking about what the DDA is, what our purpose is, and how we can work well with the municipality. So I encourage you to do that, if you need, uh, registration information, we can share that. We are planning a volunteer appreciation event for October 8th. We did that just to help support, um, it's going to be more of a smaller event and we hope to do a larger one after the new year, but we do want to give thanks to all of those that have given their time over the last year, so we're including those that volunteered last fall in Scarecrow Fest, Soup and Sweet, et cetera. Um, and that'll be just a pizza party slash ice cream at summer Sundays, we're getting discounted rates on both of those items from local businesses, so we're excited about that. And then we do have, um, a community space support, uh, call to action. We, now that Riley's out, we don't have an intern, the next couple of weeks, we still have all the furniture in, um, the community spaces, we're asking for volunteers to help keep things clean. We can't be out there every day to make sure everything's looking amazing. I got a text on Sunday that we had a rogue umbrella in Washington Square.
I forget what you were doing out there.
I was coming home from vacation with my daughter and I was like, oh, I have to be driving by, no problem, but there's like an umbrella upside down because it was windy, so rightfully so, customer was concerned and let the business know. Um, but we, you know, having more support is always helpful, especially while we go through the next couple of weeks. Oh, finally, last thing, we did attend, um, a SEMCOG member meetup a couple of weeks ago and what it was, that we walked through downtown Auburn Hills and we really looked at their place-making and development and redevelopment, so it was really interesting to see how they've chosen to basically create a downtown in a space that didn't have a downtown and how they're utilizing those spaces. So that was really an interesting, a good use of time.
Okay, I will walk into detail because there is four of them, um, but one's for the concert, the market, four online dancing. The concerts are first, we had eight concerts this summer, they started June 19th and went to this past Thursday, August 14th. And we had, um, there's, everyone was sponsored by this in downtown, so the sponsor breakdown was there. And most of them came and had a table at the concert. I think they all were pretty well-attended except for, um, going into July 4th, but that day was like crazy hot and humid, I think there was a storm that was like covering...
Wasn't there like an air quality over there too?
Yeah, there was like a lot, I guess. But otherwise, I think they were pretty well-attended. Um, there's also the expenses and profit breakdown, so you didn't have anything like that, I don't know if it's up to you, but, just so you guys could see it.
And I think just something to note, this is the first year that we're actually really putting analytics around these events, so I did my best to pull data from last year to try and compare it as much as possible, just to give a general idea. Um, you know, obviously looking into next year, we'll have more apples-to-apples type comparisons, so we can see, you know, when we're spending money. I think there might have been an understanding in the past that these concerts were fully funded through sponsorships and I don't know that that's quite the case, um, but the return that we get could... and I don't know that that's quite the case. Um, but the return that we get could definitely, you know, overshadow that. It's just we wanna make sure that there's transparency there with information on how the money's being spent and what's coming in and what's going out.
And this, we did bingo before every concert. People loved it. Um, so we might do it next month.
It was awesome. Yeah. I didn't know we were gonna bingo. It was so fun.
Yeah, who knew bingo would be so popular?
But there are people that came every week who like showed up early for bingo, stayed for the concert, so.
So can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I really, really appreciate this. I understand that we don't have, you know, metrics from last year. Just briefly, we spent seventy-two hundred dollars. That's twenty cents a person. I think that's. I think at some point, twenty cents a person getting them downtown, that even if somebody, that's from our expenses. Not everyone's going out buying something, but I feel like there was, I don't know if there's a way to even do it further out, but there has to be a, that's a good ROI, I'm imagining.
I can tell from the social district cups that we saw that we're not gonna patronize the Mero Mero and not, so.
Any other comments or questions about concerts? The next is the market. It went a little bit later, so it started Thursday, um, July tenth and went to August fourteenth. Vendors, it was one-fifty for the whole series. And, um, we had a sponsorship from Grace Life. They sponsored the whole market, so then we gave them a spot in the market for that. And they were there almost every week. This last week, they weren't due to staffing, but, um, and I asked all the vendors, especially if they were here last summer and the summer, like comparison between the two and just in general. And the traffic was a lot less this year. They kind of also, they were doing about half of what they did last year. Um, so we, we had tried posting in different groups, just advertising it in different ways. So we're kind of talking about what next summer should be like.
There were also about half the amount of vendors as last year.
Right.
But.
State that again?
There were about half the amount of vendors as la, no?
No. I think we had maybe six or seven fewer.
Okay. So I know there were a lot last year.
It looked like a lot because they were all shoved into the parking lot.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Yeah, optically, it definitely looked lighter.
Yeah. Well, and having lighter is not always a bad thing, too. I find that the other market, generally, people spend more when there's fewer vendors to spend with at times. So it's not a bad thing. I thought it was a great variety. I enjoyed it when I stopped by.
I think the biggest factor, two pieces, is one, we did not secure our user, and that is a huge attractor. Um, so that definitely could, um, explain some of it. And I think just in general, from what we're hearing from businesses, is that sales are down this year. Um, so that would, that would attract.
Okay. And then we have one dancing people, one flying dancing. We weren't sure that we were gonna do it this year, and then, um, Nicole Stack, she owns the refinery right next to the bike shop. She decided she would, had a full thing and volunteer. She brought in a bunch of people. And then like every week, there was tons of drop-ins, uh, on top of the people that had paid for the full series. So it was sixty dollars to pay for the full series and then ten dollars if you just dropped in. And every week it was, it's great. And people really loved it. And then last thing was Hornhole. Um, Hornhole did really well. Also another, uh, they're a community that just likes to be out. Four, people get very serious. They did two divisions, a competitive and a rec league, or division. And the competitive people were like, like one week, Riley had texted Kimberly and was like, can I go home? Like, they're still playing it with like nine. They were still.
Their poor intern, I figured she was gone. And she was like, um, you asked us, asked us to stay, or asked me to stay until it was over, but they're not stopping. I was like, oh, yeah.
But people really loved it. And I was there for the last, this last week for their, like, tournament. And people were just hanging out. Like the tournament, there was like, you know, breaks in it. People were just hanging out, having a good time. I know that social district stickers, we ran out of them because those, um, like tap and grab cap, like the Hornhole people were really enjoying drinks from there. So, yeah.
We did have one unexpected expense with the Hornhole this year. Last year, we had the boards made and they came with, um, sets of bags. And unfortunately, the bags just didn't hold up. So it was recommended that we get like a nicer, quality, professional level bags. So we did do that, and we did get some sponsorships for that, but it didn't cover all of the bags. At the end of the day, I think it was worth it because it, you know, businesses had their, their logo, additional advertising, and, you know, they're a little bit nicer.
Make sure hopefully last.
Pictures.
For summer events, but over now.
Thank you. I'll submit your, your, your report up here. Uh, moving on to number eight, unfinished old business. Um, eight A is the crosswalk project. It's like sidewalk project.
Yep. So where we're at, and Joe can maybe speak to it, we, um, at the last board meeting, it was recommended to get an official quote from, uh, the contractor that we've decided to move forward with to add some additional flags of, um, the concrete, that's called, concrete, thank you. Um, and so we have that in the packet. It's four, or fifty-four ninety would be covering all of that. So we wanted to get a motion tonight for that.
Did, chime in. The reductions in the savings what we thought last time were nothing more than that. So I think the motion, we kind of thought, and Ash, if I remember, you kind of made it, up to a certain amount because we knew it was about X dollars and some was gonna be taken out, and then once the other number was put back in, it still came in at a lower, yeah, price.
Uh, you did. So we did have a, a five, like a top number, but I think there was a motion to move forward with getting a quote from the S I. So, um, we do have that. So I don't know if we need an official motion or if we're good.
Is it, is it getting, need to go to the village anyways? No?
I would say it's under the one ninety, it's one ninety-seven, is what we approved last year, our last meeting for the total project. The only thing, I think, to make it transparent or at the same time for everybody understanding what's going on is that we were to make a motion to amend the original quote, or the original RFP, adding the additional concrete squares to it, you know, which still brings it up to that, to that part of it there. I mean, that's the only thing that I think we, we need to do is just amend that portion of it, adding that to it. Because it is outside of the original.
Is that additional engineering services basically for?
Nope. Nope, it's just a matter of just the additional three hundred and some, three hundred and five square feet is what it is, is what we're adding to it, so.
I think the village has offered to do some of the pre-work.
The demo and the restoration would have worked.
Stowing it in, moving all that way of the concrete, uh, flags, and then installing that in. So it's there when they come out, while they, which they stone out and pour it.
Well, I don't know, do we have to have an amount? I mean, and the way that I feel about it is that I, I think it is a safety concern having a heaving right there. So I'm for it, so I would make a motion. Motion to, uh, provide a change order, um, for the additional, um, three hundred and five square feet of concrete to address the safety, uh, concerns with the heaving, um, in the amount of five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars additional.
Second.
And move by Nick Seans, reported by Ross. Is there any questions? Roll call, please.
Uh, Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Marie Powers, yes. Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Jacob Macassia?
Yes.
Uh, Jay Chow?
Yes.
And Melissa Caminos?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Board of Representatives. While we're at Big Park, are we still waiting for Row to get back with us with the updated portion of that? So, because I know Tim emailed today wanting to know where we are, so.
Yeah, obviously, it'd be a lot less time needed on site than the original plan, so that will reduce the cost of the original estimate as well. I don't have a number yet. Much less than what was originally planned and approved and planned.
And then I think Tim is looking from Birmingham Seal Code then as far as the updated whatever for, for his contracts, so he can proceed.
Yeah. I know Ricky, he'll be here, so hopefully. Cause Tim was looking to do this when, September?
He didn't say.
Yeah, I think we did with them August, maybe middle of September. We've talked about end of September because they were pretty bad themselves, so.
Yeah, I don't, my understanding was that he wouldn't be able to give us a date until we got all of the funds and stuff, and the.
Right.
So we'll have to dial in and get a, kind of expect right away so they can sign it. They'll know. I sent them back the spreadsheet with a number plugged into it that he did not provide it, so we have that. But it will be less on site, a little, a lot of this taking involved and stuff. And we could take that from his place, like assign that, okay, sign it, sign.
Okay. Very good. Uh, moving on to eight B, the gazebo plant update.
Yes, the bids are out. They are coming in on Wednesday, the twentieth. So we should have more. I would, I think we have done here, um, about a special meeting. I'm suggesting that once we get the bids in, that we host some sort of special meeting either later this week, um, probably later this week, so that we can just make a decision on if we wanna move forward with these bids. If we do, there's a phase one and a phase two. If we wanna do both. My concern from a timing standpoint is, I, once we make a decision, I have to kind of go in through our, um, prior grant application, make the corrective, make the corrections of what we're doing differently, send that to Oakland County. It has to go to some sort of committee, then that committee takes it to the Board of Commissioners, and that has to be approved before we can officially move forward. Um, so from a timing standpoint, if we wait until next month, then we're just pushing everything out.
Okay. Good. All righty. Eight, D, trolley status update.
Yes, so here we are. It's back on the go. Thank you, Ashley. She used her magic powers of whatever persuasion to. Well, this is awfully ironic that mere hours after your inquiry, it resolved. So the trolley ran this past weekend, which is wonderful. Um, it should be running this Thursday for the National Cedar Citizens Day that's being hosted by both Orion and Oxford Parks and Rec, and Orion and Oxford DDA's are helping to support that event. Um, and then should be up each weekend. I don't know if we wanna have a larger conversation tonight or if we wanna just put a pin in it until the season wraps up. At this point, we're planning to end the weekly routes after, um, the end of September and then just have the trolleys run for the special events in, uh, in the remainder of the year, so end of October, potentially end of November for Small Business Saturday, um, and then the Polar Express.
Any discussion or any other comments, thoughts?
We have to have a discussion on it.
What are the other options, I guess?
Well, I believe it was the work committee that had requested me to look into selling it. Um, I talked to Pete offline and said I'm gonna pause on that until we have a board meeting because I want to get feedback. I don't want to pursue trying to sell something if we're not all in support of moving forward with that option. So I think the options are to sell it, to repurpose it, or to continue to run it weekly, or to continue to run it, or to start only running it for special events. I will say, having conversations with Lake Orion DDA, they are appealing very heavily towards supporting it just for special events in twenty-twenty-six. They're not seeing the return from the weekly, especially with it being offline for about a month.
Rachel.
I think that we really should look into partnering with Legacy Center and Neighborhoods.
And keeping it in Oxford.
It's.
Shh.
How good, I'd say, would that loop still incorporate them in those few special events?
Yeah, I think that you could. I'm just saying on a regular basis, if they're not interested, we're not getting the back and forth traffic.
I think that we were used to it when it first started. What I'm seeing now is people from our neighborhoods,
why not do a couple stops in Waterstone? They're gonna go to concerts in the park and ride the trolley. Why not Oxford Lakes? They're gonna go to concerts in the park, do a loop. Hey, you're at nine-two-five jumping, but I don't only want pizza. Let's hit downtown and go to Homegrown instead afterwards. Like, those are the types of loops that I think will keep people going and still in the village, but we know most of our people aren't necessarily coming from the village. They're coming from the township. Or, you know, we have Oxford Lakes, which is the village, but that's not always necessarily walkable for everyone either.
Just, just a question on that or a comment. Um, we would have to change the schedule then to Thursday nights for concerts in the park, um, right? Thursday night instead of a Friday, Saturday.
Cause I was wanting the trolley, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, but if which.
Or maybe we do it Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, we'd have to change it either way.
I mean, we have to change the trolley schedule. I am meeting with CJ Gostor Friday, cause he's national, whatever, he's probably not shared, so. Um, but I, I think that there's ways for us to rethink it that we've been talking about. It's clearly, like, if it's an event-based thing, if that's what Orion's interested in, I don't think that we need to necessarily get rid of it. But if we look at branching out and see then, okay, if we have any partners at Legacy Center that might wanna sponsor it, or maybe we look into something more reliable than our current trolley, that if the, or try it for a year and see if that works, and then look into investing in something that's more.
Yeah, I would just like to keep the focus on helping the businesses though, so that we're not just providing a free shuttle and people stay in the park and listen to the concert and go home. You know, because then that's just defeating the purpose.
From a financial standpoint, if we're only, if we're no longer sharing costs with a partner, and then we are now responsible for the full cost, that's going to change our budget. Cause at this point, we're spending half of the total. We would be spending probably eighty to ninety percent of that total.
I also think we could get different sponsors if we make a couple different, one or two more stops. Gets us very different sponsorship opportunities.
Yeah, we're stopping at the Legacy Center. It would likely be at an exchange, I'm sure. They've wanted the trolley there for some time.
I think as far as not, and we discussed it at the org committee meeting too, Scott and I both raised a question that I don't think feasibly we can end it right now, uh, if we've already got sponsorship that have been paid and also agreement with Orion, whatever. Um, and both of us were more inclined to say, hey, let's finish this season with what, you know, what we have sponsored and then look real hard at, you know, at the end of the season to say, you know, come December, okay, let's now have hard conversation or more ideas or, or whatever back and forth, so.
Cause it'll be offline from mid-December.
Correct.
Mid-March potentially.
Yep.
Although we do have heat now, so that could change things. I'm very excited.
It's the small wins.
So at this point, I would say more discussion to follow as, as the season plays out. At this point, we would continue on until the rest of the year and then take a, the card, look at it at that point then. Okay. Nine B, or nine A, excuse me. New business, special meeting for updates to ARPA application.
So I don't know if people have their schedules now. I'm wondering if we could meet, and it can be Zoom, right? Or do you have to, it has to be a person?
So that doesn't give a lot of people, the bids are due Wednesday.
I don't know what time. Do you know what time?
Ten AM, I think.
Okay, I'll double check.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes they're kind of clear, sometimes they're not clear. I'll be laying out there, you know? Um, but you may have good enough feel for the bids to say, yeah, we got some good ones here. We'd really like to move forward with this.
Yeah.
That might give you enough time.
Okay, yeah, I'm just thinking.
Sure beats waiting for the following week.
Yeah, well, I'm in a town. I mean, I can always call, I could call in. I don't know if our just maybe can be here in the next. No, next, probably.
A lot more reason to try to do it through.
Yeah. So I'm hoping it'll be pretty clear how we would wanna move forward financially, because I think that's the biggest challenge at this point, um, for that particular project, because it came back so much higher than we were expecting. Hopefully, this time, it's a little more in alignment with what we're. Hopefully this time it's a little more in alignment with what we're expecting.
You could post a meeting. You have to do a couple eighteen hours advance, or probably, you know, post it. You could post it um tomorrow.
Okay.
Or even Wednesday, you know, in the morning. Depends on what time of day on Thursday you're gonna have. We got at least eighteen hours advance.
Okay.
So for a meeting on Thursday, does it work for, what time would everybody be able to make it on Thursday afternoon or evening? Evening?
Evening or morning.
Pardon?
Evening or morning.
I can't make Thursday evening.
Um, for what day?
Thursday.
Thursday?
This week, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh geez.
It's first day of school.
That is the first day of school.
Yeah, so definitely I would put it towards the evening if we could have a real quick at like seven o'clock again if it coming to one, take more than, shouldn't take more than half an hour max to, to do it.
I'm, I'm available, and they have that senior day too on Thursday, so I, I'll be doing that a lot of the day. I could do seven PM. I could not do any time during the day.
Seven would be early.
Okay, yeah, we'll tentatively put it at seven o'clock and if something happens that it can't happen, then we'll get a notice out to everybody to say that we're not gonna do it. But we'll plan on seven o'clock. Thank you. Nine B, trash can and bench restoration quote up to Murray.
Yes, let's try this again. Already spoiled the surprise. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with H and H Powder Coatings estimated cost to refurbish the existing ten benches and twelve waste receptacles at an estimated cost of fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Then moved by, part support by Ross.
Okay.
Uh, discussion? Are we still talking at the end of the year or year in the winter months to, to do it?
Yeah, I'm thinking after Susan's week. I talked to Rudy today. He seems in support of that study to have any time after Susan's week's over and then bring them back March, mid-March to end of March. So that's plenty of time.
Okay.
So then they'll be storing them during the winter too.
Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Scott, yes, roll call please.
Okay. Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Jacob Nikasia?
Yes.
Uh, Jay Chow?
Yes.
Melissa Canilis?
Yes.
Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Anne Marie Powers, yes.
And thank you for committee for taking care of that, doing the legwork on all that. Moving on to nine C, Civic Plus Social Media Archiving Quote Approval. That would be Mr. Matilla.
If you recall, you're an expert, so um our previous record was go do some things, do some downtown folks and online acquisitions back and forth. And there was screenshots of being taken on social media and things like that. Well, Civic Plus used to be archived social. Civic Plus took it over and owned it now. Um, and we, I'd seen a quote from them a year or two earlier about they archive their social media accounts in near real time. It's only a matter of seconds. So if somebody was on our police, uh, thing and made a threat on there, so again, they will take it down ten minutes later. Well, we already captured that. And it's one of those almost necessary evils of today in social media.
Yep.
And so about a year ago, I revisited the idea and I went to Kelly and I said, look, here's what it is. It would include their accounts, their, the DDA. Um, I think it both accounts you had a, get a Twitter photo.
Instagram.
Instagram, there you go, along with Facebook, the village Facebook and the police Facebook. We don't put much on ours. The bulk of them, as far as the posts are, are DDA, I think police, that's more than, you know, we. Almost anybody does. So, and I say, you know what? Look, we'll just split it, you know? It's, it's one of those things. We would split the cost and a lot of our, and um, a lot of communications goes to the DDA Facebook, you know, and there's a lot out there. So it was one of those things that we just proposed split it fifty-fifty and we did so. The first year is up and they got a certain invoice a couple months in advance for our consideration.
So it would be.
It's very searchable. You can go in and you can go back and check and then I never done it after, go through the training, that kind of show training. Like it's, it captures it and it stores it in large volumes for a long time.
And Joe, just to clarify, this amount that's on the invoice, we would be responsible for half of that, right?
Yes, that's, that's the total. That last year we split it fifty-five to the DDA.
Yeah, it should be twenty-one ninety-eight and seven cents every business. Ashley.
Does this cover all of our subsequent pages, like the business owners page or is it just?
Just our accounts.
Well, we do, um, so the DDA owns the business owners Facebook page, so I don't know if it's such a half, but it should.
Yeah, I would think it would.
I don't know.
If it's on, like, if it's one of your accounts, if you get accounts, I, I think so.
It's under our.
It's under, okay, I'm sure, okay.
There's like a sub column of your main DDA account company?
Yeah, we kind of like graded the page, but the DDA owns that page, so.
Well, we can confirm.
Yeah.
I would confirm just cause I could see that also being a spot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's kind of the genesis and the backstory of it and then kind of now you have it. Cause part of the things we kind of get forced into doing is because we're creating a public record. And, you know, OD's acts and record retention and things like that goes our records and there are certain things that are triggered in when you start putting stuff out. So capturing it, archiving it for various reasons is helpful.
We'll make a motion for us to move forward splitting the costs with the Village of Oxford fifty-fifty. So two thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents for Civic Plus for archiving for the next, for this year.
Okay.
For next year.
Support and move by Ross, part of Nikasia. Any other comments, questions? Roll call please.
Yep, Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Marie Powers, yes. Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Jacob Nikasia?
Yes.
Jay Chow?
Yes.
Melissa Canilis?
Yes.
Thank you, board member. Uh, nine D, the My PDM Program?
Yes, so this is the program that we talked about when I was applying and received the offer for this position. It's a three-year development program through the Michigan Downtown Association. The application um window is now open for a future class, so I just wanted to get approval to move forward with that application. Financially, it's not a, too, too big of a concern at this time. I believe it's like two hundred dollars to apply to the program. Um, I will also be applying for a scholarship. Not sure that I'll get it, but it will help offset some of the classes. Um, but it is again a three-year program and there's, I think, twelve courses in there, so each course would have to be paid for as part of that program.
When moved by Ross? How supported? So supported by Schultz. Any comments? Roll call please.
Yes. Uh, Melissa, Clint Canilis?
Yes.
Jay Chow?
Yes.
Jacob Nikasia?
Yes.
Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Marie Powers, yes. Pete Schultz?
Yes. Nine D, Brownfield Tiff?
So Joe is gonna talk today about this other final study.
So I think it was September-ish or August of last year that our planning commission was given proposal, additional rezoning, uh, we call it South Washington Triangle. It's part of our future, uh, master plan. Behind the new car wash down there, the triangle piece down there. Um, it's own single-family residential. We had some developers come to the planning commission and, and for a conditional rezoning to put in thirty-two condos in there. Because it wasn't zoned for that, they, they didn't apply for a rezoning, rezoned multifamily, just anything multifamily. Go in there instead, they took a more narrow approach with conditional rezoning requests, which is allowed by state statute. And they pitched this very specific plan. Planning commission agreed to it, went to the village council, the council approved it. I don't know if anything's ever been built on that property. All I know is some vacant for a long time. Um, and years ago, this DDA was outlined and put together. They wrapped around around that vacant piece of property in hopes, I'm sure, down the road, it will be developed and that will be to provide some additional taxes, capture revenue. And so that project was approved as the owners began to look into it and the cost and the financing and of course, running the infrastructure of sewer water down on Lincoln Street from a mechanic and down inside, those costs are large. Then they became aware, I didn't tell them about it, they became aware of a new Tiff program the state of Michigan has. It's called Brownfield Residential Tiff. If you, if you're familiar with all of Brownfield, it's more industrial, old industrial sites or contaminated sites that they call Brownfield is kind of what they are. Um, and you do the cleanup and there's a certain years of tax capture that you go um to benefit the developer under those doing all expensive cleaning up that site and developing up. The state just kind of went off to the side and created an additional Tiff under the same statute in twenty twenty-three for residential development because they're, they're trying to figure out why isn't there more residential development happening in the state of Michigan? And so they did this, kind of weird that it's on the Brownfield Tiff because it has nothing to do with contaminated sites and stuff. It's more to incentivize developers to produce homes in that mid-range, like hundred, hundred twenty percent median household income range. It's not local housing. It's not uh eight hundred thousand dollar homes either. It's that mill that's your average person's looking to buy. So it is a Tiff, which is like the DDA tax, tax increment financing. That's how they uh, they repay some of those developing, uh, those tax, future tax costs back to the developer. If this weren't in the DDA district, it would have come to council and council would have just actively approved it, said, yep, sounds great. Go into development and it's a minimum of five years, maximum of thirty that the program can do. These developers have earmarked fifteen is what they would need to make their project viable. Uh, a portion of those homes would be, kind of have to follow a certain guideline that's a MISHA. Like twenty percent of those homes or twenty-five percent of those homes would have to be like, not rent stabilized or something along that. They have to be at least earmarked or marketed in, in that range of the hundred, hundred twenty percent household median income. But that's a way to incentivize them and to rebate some of these property taxes back to the developers to make the development viable. Problem is, you already have a Tiff on the property and they want to put their Tiff on the property. They can't put their Tiff on the property unless you allow them to do so. So next month, um, hopefully there will be some agreement here for this DDA board to consider allowing you to kind of put your Tiff in advance or off to the side for fifteen years. Let them do this development. And fifteen years, they will get that tax capture. Once their Tiff expires, it goes back to the DDA and this thirty-two units of condos now took fifteen years of appreciation on top of them. Go back and uh be the catcher going to the DDA. The council would have one um resolution of support to do ourselves. And one, I think Kimberly, I'm sure you guys at least did print on this one. We just got this, I think, over the weekend, perhaps maybe Friday. Um, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is branched through Oakland. We had an online meeting last week with Brad Hanson, I think from Oakland County who does it. We kind of handed off to them and they take care of it all. So the developers were on the meeting, Brad was at the meeting. It sounds fairly straightforward. And it sounds pretty straightforward if you all agree and say, yep, we would like to help this along by us stepping aside and our Tiff capture and allowing this development to happen. Then knowing down the road, it goes back uh to the DDA when their Tiff, if approved, expires. It's kind of the cut and dry. Um, I don't think they, they can, I don't think with this, without this, they're gonna be able to pull this project.
The only issue I have with this particular resolution is it says outlining the plan, but I don't think we've all seen the plan. And so I know we had talked about fifteen years. I think everything makes sense.
This will, hurry up, send me something to share with you tonight, so next month we can get maybe more fully, fully flushed out.
I think that's something that you'd all like to see, but.
You'd have to.
Is it the plan by Design House for uh Oxford Townhouses?
Yes.
Yes, that's the plan. That, that's the building plan, but there are also Brownfield Redevelopment Authority plan perhaps as well. So we don't have all the pieces yet. So tonight, this is just like a heads up.
Information.
This is kind of where it's going next week or next month. We would hope to have all the full details to you for your consideration at the regular September meeting.
Before, one quick question before the next meeting, when we, when we sit down and really talk about this. Is it possible for you or for the village to provide what we, the DDA currently captures off that piece of property?
I think so. I think I had that data somewhere already in the, um, what was the plan of the DDA, the rear, the Tiff plan you just read a year ago.
Right.
I think every parcel was listed in there of what is current and then maybe projected in the future. One of those many, many parcel numbers is this property.
Okay.
So I can kind of locate that and find.
That would be helpful. I mean, just for all to say.
You might be collecting a thousand dollars right now.
Yeah, if, if you're naked, it's vacant property.
Right.
Um, so it's like, oh, okay, it would be about fifteen grand or fifteen years. And then all of a sudden, we're gonna be bringing in eighty thousand dollars a year off that property in fifteen years because now these thirty-two condos are there and built up. So that's kind of where it's at. Yeah, I, I plan on trying to nail it down for you, provide it to you. Luckily, it's only one parcel too. It's not like, it won't make enough to develop it.
Ashley.
Um, one last question from my own knowledge. Is it fifteen years after a unit sells or how is that?
I don't know. I don't know what the, Brown, like, if that's through Oakland, I don't know if it's, because there could be a, other thirty-two units. I think like not even quarter of them, I think, have to fall into certain criteria of this. So maybe those, it's the first four or six built that fall into that criteria. So I don't know when that clock starts.
That's all that one knows. When does it start? When does it?
Yeah, I don't like, and we just had, I think it was Tuesday last week, we had our online team meeting with the Zoom from Oakland County to rent the Brownfield hotel uh plan. And then this came via email since then. I didn't see it till Monday. And, you know, um, we could always share off to you guys or to you, uh, the, the plan itself. You guys can see what it is that you're hopefully helping to get out the ground.
Kimberly?
And he offered to come tonight, I think, but we asked and we said it wasn't needed.
Yeah, their attorney drafted it down next month. Well, they could be here and they could answer some additional questions. You'll have a lot more information to, to be put in the packet as well and maybe even prior to that.
Because of the, um, I was at the planning commission, you know, when I went through the whole process and was approved and everything. And at that meeting, he stated that pretty much most of them would be in the average of like, you know, between three fifty and four hundred thousand is what they were talking about selling these things for. So now technically it's changed, then if he's offering some of these, they're gonna be, you know, much lower than that.
I don't know if it's gonna be much lower, but they have to be within a certain range. Because as you build out a project like that, all of a sudden, two or three years, let's say it's a year down the road and they built eight of them and then it's, because it takes ten to build or ten of them. And then at next year's, the ones are four fifty, then next year's, they got five more of them or five hundred. There has to be some that come in at that certain, right, cap range and have to kind of stay there. There's some format, I'm not sure how, but, but I was in the MISHA thing uh about a year ago. You know, there was other examples they've done around the state where MISHA's involved. They're involved with this as well.
Kimberly?
Uh, the question that I had, and I don't know if tonight's the night to have the conversation, but do we anticipate any other developments looking for this same?
I would think so because the cat is at the bag.
That's what I'm wondering. So I think this is a pretty big decision because I think it sets the precedence going forward of what we will or will not allow.
It, and the Tiff program is explicitly for residential. Because then the MISHA's uh meeting, they said the question was asked to developers, why don't you build two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar homes in Michigan? And the developer response was, it's because they cost three hundred thousand to build. And I'm like, okay, that's a problem. How can we find a way to put their program together to get those kind of homes built? So that's how the state of twenty twenty-three, this came around. The other one that potentially could fall in the same category is the Antelope. There is no worry to do anything over there. Um, I wish they'd knock it down soon, but they're really busy this time of year. I, I think they'll get that demolished here in the summer, this fall sometime. But that would be the only other one. I think it would be, again, now we're giving up two potential ones.
First, you've got a piece of property on North Oxford, Glac, North Glass Street.
Yeah, the one that.
Right at the Paulian Trail.
Yeah.
Bisects the township also, and then you've got the property out on Lakeville Road.
Yeah.
Right now, nothing, nothing is still happening.
Right. All of nothing, it won't happen though. So that's kind of where, and that's what the state's at too, right? Rates are pretty high right now. These developers and development things, you know, they're not that great for them to do it. So their costs are up, of course, too, right? So they're looking at, how do we make this work? And, and in these, they said that they were told by their financing people, banks and others, you have to go at least fifteen years to nail down before we give you credit for that in your financing scheme. If they went ten years, they go, we can swing in, that's a ten-year Tiff, the bank will give them credit for it. Listen. So the fifteen is the manner that the bank will give them credit into it. They don't want twenty or thirty, which the statute allows, so they're, they're going for fifteen because that's, that's what makes it work.
Okay.
So yeah, so next, today was just a, well, what? So yeah, so next, tonight was just a quick heads up, it was less than a week early at this meeting. Hopefully September will have a lot more information that you can.
Alright, thank you. Uh, more to follow than I was sure. Number ten on the agenda, any items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Uh, board member comments, Melissa, you can start.
No comments this week.
Great.
I'm trying to think of something.
That was a great wrap up for Concerts in the Park, thank you for the data.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious to hear how you guys got that data, I'm excited.
Just carry on and, uh, looking forward to the scare front festival, it's always a good event for the downtown.
A great job on, on Concerts in the Park, um, people around town haven't really been, even talking about it, so, um, uh, good luck to everyone with, uh, youngins, starting school this week, and get all your school shopping done and get them waking up early.
Yeah, that's the fun part.
So much fun.
I reject that summer resounding.
You did that motion. You did such a fabulous job, so great work.
Jay?
Yes, I've been hearing from a lot of people, um, things I've been on the up and down of the downtown Oxford and went to some of the concerts and it really was great to see hundreds of people, families, kids running around and I think there's a lot more trust into the events that have been down in town, so I'm looking forward to playing into it as far as anything that's gonna happen somehow.
Ditto on all that, you know, it's been really great to work with and just, well, a lot of that's based on one of the committees you were talking about, Marie evolved the temporary sheds and storage containers. Those private aren't gonna fly with our ordinance, those kind of things, especially events, will they come and they set up during that special event timeframe go away, yes. But as far as them to be set up and left in place, I think it's a real, I don't think anyway that fits in our ordinance, I think.
Okay, good to know.
Oh, that shed at Washington Square, um, I was joking with Kimberly, I says, what do I do with this? Raffle it off. Sell a couple hundred tickets per dollar, you win it, take it, we don't want it back. It was in our DDA shed, it came as a last minute thing because we're those, those greenhouse things that were being sent for Santa blew down about five days before Santa was showing up and I said, uh, we have a shed, we moved it over there. And that's why it was put there and then we thought, well, we could perhaps possibly use it and they have used it, but it'd be nice to see it growing, I think.
I would be so happy with that shed.
Maybe some firewood for some barrels at a Christmas market? It could be firewood for the barrels at a Christmas market.
Put a grip around it and say, you could win this for a dollar.
Yeah, the expired cheap is that.
The, uh, party shot, what is it, eighteen cells, Washington, whatever. They, they applied for a demo, they met about three, four weeks ago and of course I went back with all kinds of things that we need from them first. I got an email from them Thursday, Friday over the weekend, they're hoping to get back with us, they met with the owners, the, the, we started a demo. Met with the owners, they want to meet with us, potentially even two-hour worth kind of dates that see if they're, got their other eyes out of teeth for us and things like that, so hopefully they, uh, come back and solidify that plan and we can issue that permit if that lead wrong. The, uh, gas and electric have been disconnected, of course, but now we just have to make sure their plant and take it down is gonna work.
Have we done Blader Moon Book for that?
Pardon?
Have we done a Blader Moon Book grant on that?
Nope.
They talked about it.
They talked about it.
Yeah, we let them know, we, I think we.
You remember them, or they talked, you re-invented it or something?
We approved it.
I think we, you don't think we approved it? I think it's a little, are you ever talking to them about that?
I don't, they were, you think of writing them.
We, I, I thought we did too because I remember you talking about all the, the dust containment.
Yeah, we did, they sent it, it was an email printed out for their request and it was approved.
Okay.
That'd be nice, yeah, but anyways, hopefully you can get back to them this week and we'll get some more traction on that.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you, Jess, for the information, I mean, that's something we talked about way back at the beginning of the year as far as before budget and everything. Trying to do an accurate budget when we had a lot of items that we had unknowns on as far as trying to budget around and everything, so hopefully that clarifies the going forward. And again, with all of the pri, or the, the events that we host and everything, you know, are they a true, just nothing but a money hole that we're just losing money on doing it or are we benefiting from it? Or is it just people coming down for, you know, an evening of fun in the village and going back home or they're not stopping in, you know, stopping at Marie's and having a beer or something like that? I think that, you know, that's all good information that we can, you know, go forward and maybe redirect our efforts in different directions or maybe enhance what we've already got or, or remember, I think that's, that's fantastic. And I do remember last year there was information to put out about from the county that they can already, they already do capture that money or that information on as far as the cell phone data, who's, who's here and everything, or anything, so we should be able to pretty much.
So we can't unfortunately, there are access at the county, they no longer have access to that system. SEMCO does though, and I'm having some difficulty in figuring out who I need to request that from.
We have a board member who is a member of representative to SEMCO. Mr. Charles, that's his job as township trustee on that committee, so.
So I may need some offline support to make that happen.
But he was also on EV when we got those reports initially and loves them, so I think that this is as long as we, we can't kill find it.
It's that place or AI.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, sure. Um, any extended public comment?
I don't know if it's public or private, but, um, I just want to thank all of you for being so supportive of what we're trying to do this year, obviously provide more information and details for you to make better decisions and I do want to thank Jess, you did an phenomenal job this summer. Absolutely outstanding, beyond my wildest expectations, so she's here the day after, she made it through her first summer and she came back, so. For all of us. Thank you.
Alright, and at that point, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion approved, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. F eight? Eight eighteen.